Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
Chair Harris.
Present.
Vice Chair Metter.
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Present.
Ladies and Regents, stay standing.
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My nation, under God, is invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father God, we're thankful for another day you've given us, Lord. You're so good to us each and every day of our lives, Lord. Just pray your blessings upon this time we have together. In Jesus' name. I take my, taking my reading out of Psalms 119, 14, 15, 16. I have regarded the way of thy testimonies as much as in all riches. Fifteen, will meditate. I will meditate in thy precepts and have respect unto thy ways. Sixteen, I will delight myself in thy statues. I will not forget thy word. Heavenly Father God, once again, we say thank you for everything you do for us. Pray your blessings upon this day and all the folks here today. Just bless each one, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
We have correspondents, we have Sean Perry with Advent Health.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to come present to you all today. Before we start talking about sales tax, just want to take a moment and introduce Brendan Johnson, our new president and CEO for Advent Health Ottawa. So allow him to give a brief introduction.
Yeah, I've had a chance to meet and reach out to many of you. I'm excited to be here. I spent the last 10 years out on the East Coast, working in Maryland, but was born and raised in Colorado. So it's nice to come back to the cold weather, even on that side of it. I wanted to share just a quick story. Moved in in January and I brought my wife and three-year-old and seven-year-old down to Ottawa. I said, I've heard great things about the price chopper. We have to go check out the price chopper. And as we were pulling in one of the cold mornings, I went into a parking spot where you had to pull through. And there was a gentleman that had his car door open and was trying to step in. So I stopped and waved him in. And he'd waved me into the parking spot and I waved him back into his car. So eventually he got in the car and I pulled through. When I got out of my car to get my seven-year-old out, I noticed he was still there and had rolled down his window and was motioning me to come over. And I thought, uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
So I kind of walked over and said, hey, good morning. And he said, I was about ready to fight you. And I said, oh, no. And he said, to see who could be the nicest. So I said, hey, if we're fighting to be the nicest, there's no losers. We're both winners. And so he laughed, he left. It was so nice to catch up to my wife and say, hey, this is where we want to be. What a great place to come where someone wants to fight to be the nicest. So I don't know if there's a model for Franklin County, but fighting to be the nicest may be one of the things you should consider. So I'm excited to be here and look forward to getting to know you and our stakeholders across the community as we're here to serve. Wanted to give a quick update on recruitment and then I'll hand it over to Sean to kind of go back through the sales tax. Well, I'll start talking while we're clicking through there. As you know, one of our top priorities in '24 and continuing to '25 is really recruitment around the OB program, making sure that we can stand it up and bring that service back to this community. The great news is that in December, we did hire an OB-GYN that has started, Dr. Abney. She actually moved here in August and is part of the community. I think it's going to be a great pillar for our program going forward. There are two other positions that we're needing to fill out to ensure that we've got proper coverage and call. There are two family medical OB-trained positions. We've worked with a recruitment firm on the physician's side. Within the last couple of weeks, we reached out to two other recruitment firms to make sure that we're talking to as many professionals out there as we can. We have a provider coming onsite later this month to do an onsite campus visit with us that we feel good about. We've also talked to several that are graduating in August. So that remains one of our top priorities. We added a referral bonus, an assign-on bonus, to any of our employees if they know anybody that's in FMOB. So word of mouth that we want to get out there, not just to our Ottawa community, but to our team members up at Shawnee Mission and Overland Park as well. In fact, if any of you or anyone in the room knows anyone and needs to talk about that, please let me know as that remains one of our top priorities. But we're optimistic that August is still the date that we have circled to start that program.
Cool.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. So as we're here to talk about sales tax utilization for 2024 and 2025, just a reminder, the three categories that sales tax dollars can be spent in is charity care, capital, as well as operations. As we look at 2024, we received just under $2.9 million in sales tax revenue. A slight variance, based on what we were anticipating by about $40,000. But here's the breakdown of how those dollars were allocated based on what our RMH Board approved back in January of 2024. Some of the highlights that I'd like to touch on here, we did hit our allocation in charity care for $700,000. My next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we have an updated nurse call system that went into place this last year that we were excited about. We were able to purchase a lot of equipment that has tons of acronyms that'll run through EEG, EMG, PFT machines. And then one of the big infrastructure upgrades that we wouldn't be able to do without the support of Franklin County was replacing our 1973 chillers. So that was about $900,000. Those aren't something that you can just go get out of a normal hardware store and plug and play. They took a long time to come in. They actually were delivered this past Friday. And the team's working on getting those tied into the system. So we'll be up, running, ready for the warm weather that is hopefully right around the corner for us.
How long, how long have we been looking to?
I believe Doug tried to get the [inaudible 0:07:25].
There you go, there you go, awesome.
Yeah, so we're definitely excited to have those installed, ready to go for this next summer. As we look at charity care, this slide depicts the last five years of what we've spent on charity care. And the purpose of this slide I wanted to share today is you'll see in 2023 and 2024, and you'll also see in 2025, the RMH Board has decided to keep the sales tax revenue that can be attributed to charity care flat at the $700,000 mark. What I wanted to bring to you all today is that is not a cap on what we spend on charity care. As we look at 2024, we've spent just under $2 million for charity care. We've seen an increase in the last couple of years in this space. And we've really been doubling down on ensuring that our patients know if they're in need of financial assistance, that there's options for them for financial assistance so that they can make the best decisions possible for them, themselves and their family. So as we look at 2025, we budgeted just under $2.9 million for charity care dollars. Again, this allocation was approved from our RMH Board back in January. And the two new allocations on there that you see is our Wellsville Clinic remodel, as well as the support for standing up our labor and delivery program. Brendan touched on our labor and delivery program. I want to circle back to our Wellsville remodel. So we are in the process, hammers are swinging as we speak, of expanding our Wellsville Clinic from four exam rooms up to seven. The primary hub of that is primary care right now. But we're going to be able to grow that as Wellsville's growing, to rotate different specialties through there to support that growing community. It's going to have the same finishes and feel as our health park here in Ottawa. So we're excited to have that project underway. We're anticipating that to be done in about June of this year. I believe that's all I had. Is there any questions?
I have a comment. I got to meet with Brendan yesterday afternoon. I love his heart and his vision for where Advent Ottawa is going. If you look at his background, he's great. He's a great, I told him he's probably overqualified. I hope we can keep him around for a while. But I also told him that in the interim, when we didn't have, we didn't miss a step, that you guys as a leadership team kept moving us forward. So I'm excited about where Advent Ottawa's going.
Well, we appreciate it. And you know, it was a long time coming for Brendan to get here, but we do feel like we found the right CEO for Ottawa and not just any CEO.
Yep, awesome.
That's good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment? Consent agenda, consider the approval, claim vouchers, tax change orders of $336, and consider the approval Frank County Commission meeting minutes at February 19th. Both should approve the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Abstain on the minutes and then yes for the rest.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
I think I need to abstain on that one minute. Yeah, same as you.
Items of business, Mr. Walton.
Good morning. As we had discussed previously, we are in need of dump trucks, ten-wheelers. We spoke briefly, I think at the last few meetings, in reference to what we have on our agenda to purchase them. We had two on our replacement list scheduled to be replaced in 2024. So we have $608,000, $608,600 that we did not, we attempted to purchase two of them last year, but they were not be, they were not able to be built. So we have that money that Janet assures me that we have set aside from last year that we, that we will need. Also, we had two to be purchased in 2025. So we have $660,000 on that. What I'm asking you to do today is to obtain actually five trucks. That will make sure that they all are on the same footprint. We will have matching everything. We will get them through the same contractor. We do have it scheduled to, we do have it scheduled to actually be obtained in 2026. David put $340,000 aside for it. So the grand total that we're asking, and we're reaching out for next year's money, and we had a meeting with Janet and with Derek and with our management team. I think we can do this financially. I'll let Janet answer those questions, but I do think we can do it financially. So really, what we are spending is $1,644,600 for the purchase of five trucks. Dave Williams, who is out of Wichita, would be, I spoke with him on the phone yesterday. If we, if you approve this, we will be able to start building those trucks. In fact, one is probably already built and we would be taking those in on a monthly basis until we've run a six-month period and have all five trucks in our possession. So the biggest benefit of this is if we purchase all five together, they, we had some concerns about the PACR motor and through negotiations with Dave, it appears that we will be, that they are willing to pay for our warranty, a seven-year warranty on all five trucks. And it will save us $91,000. That's the benefit that we're getting from this. Eric, is there anything I'm forgetting?
No, you did a pretty good job of covering it. We're, we are confident, as Jeff said, that we can do this. We have the flexibility in the '25 budget to basically use funds that were allocated for '26. And if you want the details on how mechanically that will work, certainly Janet can give those to you. But no, this, we believe this to be responsible. The addition of that fifth truck, we believe is what gave Dave the willingness to give us that $91,000 extended warranty. So I would recommend that we move forward. But gosh, we have public work staff. Kirk is here to answer any technical questions. Happy to answer any questions. Recognize that this is a big purchase, but this is something that we've wanted to do for a while. It keeps us on top of equipment replacement, which is something that we've wanted to do for a while. So I think we're, this is as good a deal, I think, as we're going to get at this juncture.
Under the circumstances, I totally agree.
For the other piece of equipment, these end dumps are the backbone of what you guys do, both, of course, in the snow this time of year.
Absolutely.
Maintaining it around for the rest of the year.
Cole, you know they're vital. They're the most important piece of equipment that we have to try to keep things going. We're to a point now where we can either purchase these trucks and utilize them for public needs, or we will continue to struggle maintaining the trucks that we have and the downtime. And the entire community feels it when we have those issues.
I'm glad we were able to pay for these with cash every couple of years. We look for these opportunities, especially, we got spoiled with low interest rates. Everyone did, but with what we would likely be paying to finance these, we're saving the taxpayer hundreds of thousands of dollars, not going towards interest payments. And I'm glad we can keep taking those bites every couple of years and save a, save a lot of money, be more financially responsible. We didn't have any issues getting out of the own contract, the ones that couldn't fulfill, they waited a year.
They violated that contract, so they, they understood. They were not happy, but they also understood our situation.
Just reading this, do you need a motion for 1.7 or 1.6 figure?
1.7. So we need to spin that, but then we are going to get a check for $91,000.
They'll reimburse us the?
Reimburse us, yes.
Okay, so you need the authority for one?
All right, yeah, yes.
Question four. How about, are we going to be able to use all our equipment for snow plows after our old stuff?
This is all due. Everything's due.
All new?
Mm-hmm. Everything. Spreaders, plows, the beds are designed a little different. Everything will be brand new.
Okay.
I have a question. So because we're buying five at one time, looking at the backend, when we replace them eventually, hopefully you aren't going to do all five at one time?
We will not. We will spread them out to our best ability and we will obtain the ones that most in need fastest. We will probably look a lot like what we should have done before the Allison transmission issue, where we'll get two, two and one.
Not like we didn't try.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's not like we didn't try. And we've gone so far with Dave Williams that I have the contract available right now. It's just a matter of you guys approving it and we should, we should be seeing trucks flow through here pretty quick.
Now, were they the ones to cover the Allison transmission or did that end up happening to be through Allison?
That, that came through Master Tech. Master Tech is doing it. But the warranty will cover, like we discussed earlier. It will be covered through Master Tech.
And wire harnessing and all that good stuff?
Everything.
Okay.
Everything, yes. Everything that is not a wear part.
Okay.
Right, Kirk?
Yes.
Everything that's not a wear, a wear piece of equipment will be covered within that seven-year warranty.
All right.
Hi, Anne, I'm glad you brought that up though, because we literally had that discussion on Monday about equipment replacement on the backend. And that, that's part of a much bigger discussion. And as Cole commented on, trying to get on top of equipment replacement, pay cash. We're trying to do that with blades as well. So that's, this is one part of a fairly complex ecosystem, but we, we've got some time. I mean, five trucks, we've got some time.
Absolutely.
We'll get on top of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have kicked back a few of the blades to try to alleviate some of the compounding financial issues. But Derek's right, the blades, and we've talked about this, that is going to be another discussion that has to happen on another day. You know, when I first started here, we could buy a, we could buy an H, a 160 for under $200,000. I can't buy a dump truck for that. I mean, a load of grader, motor graders almost, well, by the time we're ready in another 10 years, they'll be a million dollars apiece. So we have, we have lots of discussions to have going forward.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the five Kenworth dump trucks from Master Tech for $1,736,35.
I get it.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Next is Mr. Jeff Walton again, I believe.
And that is with the transfer station?
Yes.
Yeah, Peg, I'm going to let you handle this one. We, we have obtained a JCB backhoe for the building and we are looking to obtain a warranty for it.
Good morning, guys. We purchased this JCB backhoe back in March of 2024 for $128,600 roughly. For some reason, I don't know if it was overlooked or what, but there was no extended warranty purchased at that time. I received a letter about two weeks ago stating that if we did not renew this by, we have until March 23rd of this year to purchase the extended warranty, we can go with a three-year. I call it a bumper-to-bumper. The only thing it would not cover would be the wear and tear parts. We can bump down to a two-year, I'm sorry, or we can go up to a three-year, but it doesn't cover everything. It's just a powertrain and hydraulics. We can get the two-year full coverage for $13,673, which is considerably higher than if we would have purchased it when we bought the machine. But just as an example, we had to have brake work done on our old machine and just for the front brakes, it cost us $7,500, where this would have been covered under warranty if, if it would have been the new machine and we would have had an extended warranty.
Are the two-years, 3,000 hours start now?
Yes, mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, it would go into effect on, I believe it's March 23rd. Yeah, it would just roll right into what we've got. Ebony.
Discussion.
I just want to reiterate, as Peg says, this is a piece of equipment that we use daily and it is something that, we do have a backup, but if this is down, we are down. We don't have a good option behind it, per se, but we do have, it's something that we need and it needs to keep running for us moving forward.
Something like this, put you at the top of the list possibly of getting it done, getting something taken care of or?
Yeah, yeah, it, just repeat that for me, Rod.
Would it put you at the top of the list as far as if you called them to get, get them down to get it taken care of?
Correct, yes.
Yes, it would.
Yeah, we would be, it's a, go ahead, Peg.
I'm sorry. Another benefit we have too is that Can equip has become a JCB dealer. So we are literally a mile away. They can come over, pick up our equipment and, or we can even road it over to them if it's, if it's a drivable situation. They did do the brakes on the old backhoe, did a wonderful job on them. Can't complain at all, but I do like the, the thought of being able to kind of stay local with it. But yes, it would be, they work us in just as quickly as they can.
Has it needed any repairs since we've purchased it?
No, not the new one. No, other than just regular service. It's only got like two, almost 22, well, it's probably got 2,200 hours on it now, yeah.
So if you do 2,200 hours in the first year, this is for 3,000, so would, it wouldn't go maybe the whole two years because we would hit 3,000 before the end of that term?
I guess that might be a possibility.
So we maybe would only have it for a year and a little over a year?
Probably a year and, I'd say the minimum of a year and a half. Yeah, but we use that thing six days a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the purchase of a two-year, 3,000-hour warranty for the backhoe in the amount of $13,673.02.
Oh, goodness.
Second.
Commissioner Metter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Harris.
Yes.
Okay, real quickly, if you don't mind, before I sit back down, our shredder is shipping today. So hopefully we will be back up and running with that next week. And I have been working with SCS engineers on the landfill, CND landfill permit modification application. Sent them a lot of information this last week and they're hoping to have that submitted to KDHE by the end of March or first of April, if everything goes smoothly.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. So next, next item is restoration of the courthouse. Brendan.
Morning. First, I got to thank Dustin for getting this slideshow on there. I wrongly assumed this was as simple as plugging in a cable and we were good to go. So I kind of threw that, threw that at him this morning. Yeah, so we've talked about this a few times in the past, just some of the stone issues that we're having on the old courthouse. There's a number of areas that need to be addressed. And this quote that I've got in front of you, they came out and assessed this a few years ago and this was as best as they could see from the ground. So this includes from the, anything from the ground up to the second floor windowsills. They didn't look at anything higher than that because they couldn't reach it. So this quote also includes them bringing a lift onsite so that they can assess all the rest of the stone on the building and get an idea of what we're looking at for the rest of it. So I did take a few pictures for y'all. There's just a few of them here, just kind of going over what we're seeing so you can get eyes on it. I don't know if this, if this thing will work or, there we go, okay. So this is an example of one of the damaged windowsills on the north side of the building. This will be completely replaced, I mean, that, in that quote. They have deemed it beyond patching and so that's an example of what we're looking at on that side. If you'll see toward the top there, there's a mortar joint between those two stones that's missing. That's all around the building, we're seeing that. These are just maintenance items, really. I mean, the stone is just something that needs to be kept up with. In the past, I don't think it really has been. And so that kind of, that's why we're here now, talking about this and, and there's a lot of that to be done. The, the size of the lift they need to bring to reach everything is like, I think they quoted like an 86-foot. It's because of this. This is, this is the courtyard to the jail, or the, yeah, the courtyard to the jail right next to the courthouse. And we just, you can't get in there. So we got to get something to reach out over the top of that so they can get eyes on that portion of the building. This is at the front entrance of the courthouse. If you look down the, kind of the bottom-left side of that, that pillar there, it's just disintegrating there. Hard to say exactly why that's happening, but that's one of those things they're going to address. I, if I remember right, I think in the quote, that's one they're going to to, totally replace that stone. It's the same thing on the other pillar, on the others, just a few feet away from that. But definitely an issue we want to address. That decorative stuff, we're starting to lose some of that from that deterioration. This is on that same side of the building.
And to be clear, Brendan, this company, and this is part of the reason why we've had trouble finding companies, they are going to carve that.
That's correct, yeah.
To its original.
Yep. Yeah, they've got stonemasons that can put a patch on or, or a new stone, whatever, whatever the quote entails and then they will carve it back to that design.
I mean, slapping mortar over it and.
Right.
Fortifying it is one thing, but if you're trying to truly historically preserve, then you have to pay somebody to carve.
Absolutely.
Intricate stonework, basically.
That's right. That's probably the worst windowsill that we've got on one side of the building. Or mortar joints coming out. That's probably the worst of the decorative pieces of the wear that we're seeing. And that's what it should look like. That's, that's one that's in pretty decent shape, pretty close by. So I mean, we're, we're losing a lot of that, a lot of that detail. And then lastly, I just got to mention it, there's a time capsule under the cornerstone. It's really, I think it's really cool what, they placed that cornerstone on the 4th of July, 1892. That was kind of the kickoff to the construction of the courthouse. There was a newspaper article from the following day, so the 5th of July, 1892. And just real briefly, they said, "At 10:00 AM, the procession began to form. The archives to be hidden beneath the cornerstone were deposited in a copper casket and properly sealed to lie intact for another century." It looks. It looks, it looked very like a funeral, only that the remains were sure of a resurrection sooner or later." And then it says that the, the grand secretary deposited the treasure box in its receptacle, and the stone was swung into position, and the work was done. The stone is about two and a half feet square and weighs about 2,500 pounds. So, big old piece of rock. But I, I actually, we know, I know what's in it. I'm not going to share that with you because that takes all the fun out of it. But it would be really cool to open that up and, and see what was in there.
It was supposed to be 100 years?
It was supposed to be 100 years, yeah.
Well, then let's do it, gosh.
I think, I think it would be cool, but totally up to y'all. I mean, that's, that's an additional $9,565 for them to shore that up to get it out. But, so it's not a cheap, a cheap thing to do, but.
Well, well, why we have somebody that can do it, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, right. Got somebody right there.
Can we get a sledgehammer and all of us take a turn?
So is that, what part is the actual cornerstone?
So everything with the writing on it.
Okay.
So I think, if I'm understanding right, I think that that, those layered stones underneath it, I think it's sitting down in that, and then they swung the stone over the top of it.
My concern would just be messing with the main cornerstone of a building.
I know, yeah.
And doing it, so.
And, and this, this company.
That's my concern.
Yeah, we don't want the whole building coming down.
Totally fair. This company, G K W, they've taken cornerstones out before to expose time capsules, so they have some experience doing it. Makes me feel a little bit better about it, but I, I understand the, I understand the concern. On that point, by the way, with these companies, some of the damage that we're seeing with this is from poor work that had been done. There was a big project, supposed to be a restoration project back in the 70s, and they actually caused a lot of damage. They, they sandblasted the whole building to try to clean it up, and they really messed up a lot of the stone when they did that. Then they put a waterproof coating over everything, and stone is supposed to breathe moisture, for lack of a better term. And when you put that, that moisture preventing coating on there, it traps all that in there, frees thaw cycles, and it starts breaking stone apart, and that's, that's what we're seeing.
And so will this company undo all of that work that caused that?
So the waterproofing is, that stuff is worn off. It, it only had a certain lifespan, and so, yeah, that was long enough ago now that I think we're well out of the woods on that. It's not active anymore, so that's, that part is good. They really can't, they really can't fix the, all the pitting in the, like in the brick, like it's just over the whole building. And so, but I think one of the other big things was the wrong material was used when they would do like tuck pointing and the mortar joints around it. They made their mortar joints stronger than the stone. So as things start to move, it breaks apart the stone. And so this company will use the correct mortar to put in there, and we shouldn't have that problem.
So the last major, and I'm just trying to set the stage for the commissioners, the last major stone renovation project was in the 70s, we believe?
As far as I can tell, yes, yes. And there's really only, I mean, this is pretty detailed work. I mean, like Derek was talking about, we're talking about carving detail back into stone and things like that. And so I'm, I'm reluctant to, to, I want to find somebody who knows what they're doing. You know, I want to prevent future, you know, damage from work that wasn't done properly. And so that kind of narrows our, our companies that are available to do this kind of work. There's two major ones that I'm aware of in this area. This is the one that responded to me. The other one, I've been trying to reach them for months and absolutely.
What you're alluding to there is that the way we're seeking prices and have this work done is maybe different than we would procure a lot of things where you just send it out for bid.
Correct.
We're doing it more like we would professional services or something where you pick somebody first based on their expertise and knowledge, and then you look at the price and say, is that fair? And then you negotiate details.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which makes sense.
And what will they be doing with this? Because it said they're taking out the limestone slabs underneath each window. What will they be doing with those pieces?
With the old ones?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, as far as, I mean, I guess if we wanted to keep them for something, they would probably give them to us, but I think.
I just didn't know, like, if they were going to take them and use them for something, is there like a, you know, hey, we'll give you some money? Yeah, but, or if they were just gonna.
Does the price in front of us include doing that cornerstone?
Um, no.
I don't think so.
I left that part out, yeah.
I think it'd be nice if the community wanted to raise money or something to do that, but personally, I can't hardly justify that much money, especially when, I would say if they get up high, they're probably going to find more opportunity, yeah, so.
In terms of financing this, because the courthouse is, we believe anyway, the premier tourist destination in Franklin County, this is an appropriate use of transient guest tax funds. I will tell you anecdotally, but this happens all the time, just to give you perspective. I'm downtown on Monday with the purchaser of the Crestview property, and this individual had clearly never been through downtown Ottawa, and he was in awe, just absolutely in awe of the building. And, and I don't work down at the old courthouse anymore, but I'm going to ask Janet to chime in. That happened all the time when I was down there. Folks would come into that building and just, they're just in awe of it. So I have no, this is not a, I have no strong recommendation here. This is the purview of the county commissioners, clearly, but this, this is a cherished, cherished asset in this community, and it's something that absolutely brings people in and catches their attention. Those things are not in doubt, so.
There's a lot of things we don't agree on as a community, like any community, but I, one thing that I don't know anybody who's ever not appreciated that building or, or cherished it is having it in our community. So if you're going to have an old building, you have to put money in doing it. That's just hard owning an old building.
I kind of wondered about the money involved, and then till I saw the pictures and realized the condition and truly the work that needs to be done, so, yeah, I think we should move forward.
I know it's not, I know it's not a popular thought, but of course, I've, I was here during the period that we did three projects on that building. And, and I know we kind of, it was already started when I came on. Don Waymeyer and Raymond Carey were the two, main two people there when I came on that was in it. And of course, they went at it at a different, different angle, which is, you know, everybody to their own, you know? They had hired a, a structural contractor that does historic buildings, and then he did the whole layout, it's kind of like you have done, and characterized it all. And then he, he wrote three grants for us to the heritage, which the grants paid his wages out of the grant, plus we got the money too. Told us 270,000, I don't remember how much it was, that's too many years ago to remember. And I know our office downtown at Crestview Deeds collected money every month, and I see it on our deal, a couple thousand dollars every month, and sends it out. Somebody gets it. I'm not saying we could get it, or did get it, or too late, or what, I just, I'm just telling you from back, from the back part up, I know when we did it, and I'm not saying you could get it. Maybe they'd say, oh, you got it three times, 15 years ago. And I don't have a clue. I just thought people should know kind of what happened back through some of these other processes.
We did apply for Heritage Trust Fund project funds a few years ago, and we were not granted those, but I will say the Historical Society, the Old Depot, is on the list of projects that were accepted for this year. So I believe it's about $100,000 that are coming back into our community. Also, the house that Wayne Duderstadt did was recently, in the last five or so years, awarded funds. So we are seeing funds in our community, but we definitely should put in for those. And I know the clock is still on, on the list of projects to do to fix the faces on the clock and restore the clock back to the weight system that it was in before, because if you're downtown much, you know that the clock doesn't chime correctly, it's not, doesn't keep time. So that is something that we definitely can think about, putting in for that too. The Heritage Trust Fund grant does take a while by the time they release the, the application, to when they hear the projects, to how, like much later they award the projects, and then when you can get the funds. So it is a very lengthy process, so it can't be something that needs done like right this second, or, or you have someone lined up to do it. This is not a, a thing that you can just get the funds immediately for.
And, and we're not even, there are so many protective projects in that building that we could use heritage grant money for, and I think we've applied a couple of times, and that to me is something we need more coordination with the community, because the community's seeing some of that money, but I think if we sat down with Diana, some of the other players and said, "Let's try to submit a community application each year," we might have more luck. But as you mentioned, this isn't touching the clock. If we ever wanted to restore that main courtroom, there are so many things we could do in there with heritage money, so yeah, we.
I mean, there's so many things, I'd love to do some of that in there.
So do I hear a motion to approve the bid for G K W Restoration Group for the amount of $293,200?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
I'm missing that, opening that capsule, but yes, hopefully, if we can raise money though, we would need to do it while they're available, right? So maybe we can work on that. So yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Last item is considered approval of rezoning application 24110026.
I'm not going to ask for any money.
All right.
Today, we're going to be talking about a location commonly known as 232 Nevada Road, located roughly one mile east of Richmond, Kansas. The applicant is requesting to rezone 20 acres to the A2 district, the, out of a 80-acre parcel. The remaining 60 will remain in the A1 district and transferred to a family member to the north. Through a boundary line adjustment, they'll be just shrinking their 20 acre, and then the rest of it will actually be combined to make the farmstead a little bit bigger so that they can continue the family farm operations. And the Kirshners can then take over the 20 acre lot and just live on that parcel, which is mostly just wooded area. All of the required utilities are already on the parcel as needed, and Planning Commission and staff really did not have extensive conversation about this rezoning. Both staff and Planning Commission recommend approval.
I think anytime it stays in the family, it.
Yeah, yeah. The next generation's take over the farm, they're just trying to combine that farmland and then settling down on the, the wooded timber area.
Second motion?
Second motion, go for it.
I was like, I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Back report.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. Couple of quick things first. Thank you guys very, very much. This, this was an expensive meeting. We don't have these often, but really, really appreciate.
We'd get very far into the year, wouldn't we?
Really appreciate just your willingness to do this on behalf of our Public Works employees. Thank you. With regard to the historic courthouse, I hope you guys take pride in what we've been able to do. You guys have painted that building. Now we're going to do what we believe is the first consequential stone restoration in maybe 50 years. Like, that's a really cool thing, and, and we're doing it at a time when we've lowered our mill levy precipitously, dramatically, so it's not that we're, you know, going crazy with taxes to do it, like you're running a very responsible government. So thank you very much for that. As I mentioned earlier, Monday, worked with the purchaser of the Crestview property on beginning the closing process, so that went well. As part of that, Brandon has taken measurements on the accessory building. As the five of you know, the Historical Society is going to continue using that structure until we figure out potential solutions. I think what I would like to do, if, if the five of you are okay, is maybe Monday, we're scheduled to have a study session, we can discuss it in a little more detail. But that building over there is 36 by 65. I've got all the specs right here. Pat and his team have, we're not necessarily recommending that this is what you do, but we've got aerials of what it would look like to put an accessory building out by the visitor's center. We believe that will work, so on Monday, if you would like, we can get into more detail. We can potentially start getting bids for a building like this. I think we'd all, from a staff standpoint, like to move quick and try to find an arrangement if that is what you would like to do for the Historical Society, so. Only other thing I have, and I believe the chamber is doing the same thing, now that Sabrina is on, I think we're due for an updated picture. And we have a photographer that's willing to take it, as well as individual shots for the five of you, if you're interested, for 200 bucks. We're getting a very good deal on that if there's interest, so I'll defer to you, but would you like me to reach out and get something scheduled? And we could do it after a meeting, easy enough.
Yes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay, so I'll plan on doing that, and then would you like to have a study session Monday to discuss the?
Sounds good.
Okay, that's all I have, Rod.
Restee.
Good morning. I just wanted to take a brief moment to introduce our new office manager. This is Sarah McCurdy. She came to us February 10th, and she has a background in health and human performance, and she has already hit the ground running. Since she has started, we have developed a billing manual that just shows our in-house processes on how we're going to handle those operational needs of the billing department. And so just wanted to introduce you to Sarah and share that with you.
Awesome, welcome.
Yes.
Glad you're here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tom?
I'm going to warn you or tell you, next week is severe weather preparedness week. It's not a precipitation or any forecast or anything, but it's something we do every year. Wednesday is going to be our, Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. will be our statewide tornado test, so if you hear the outdoor warning sirens going off, that's an opportunity to use your tester plan or think about what you do in the event of a tornado or something like that. I've been working with Joanna, we're going to have a little bit of a, a campaign on Facebook, and I'll get to go on COFO and talk about this tomorrow, so just be aware, next week's severe weather preparedness week.
What grants you got in the works? Tom, what grants do you have in the?
I'm getting ready to apply for several, so right now we sent, they just came out with a hazardous, hazard, I gotta, it's not hazard materials, but it's a hazard mitigation grant. So the, the N O Y has come out for that, so I'm going to look at what we, I know, we have, Pat wants to replace a generator out at Centropolis. One of the things I was looking at is automated flood signs for the 48, 48 low water crossings that we have to go and, and man. If we can automate those, so they all come on on their own, and that way it kind of gives us a real life, what comes back on that. So anything I can do on that, it's, all that's all 25, 75, 25 match, so, and that's in-kind soft, soft match.
Well, that's potentially save you a lot of time driving around flipping those signs with every corner of the county, right, when you need people the most?
Yep.
Thanks.
Peg? You got any more? Dustin? Jared?
Well, again, Derek kind of stole my words, but I do want to thank you guys for doing this. It seems like since I've been put in this chair, all I do is beg for money, and I, I'm jokingly told Derek, we've got a $7 million budget in my first nine months, I think I've In my first nine months, I think I've spent twelve." But, uh, but I, I, I think we've done some great things here. And this is one of the most important pieces of equipment that we have that the county will actually see. When I first started here, uh, most of our dump trucks were Peterbilt's and they had well over a half a million miles. We would have a snow event and we were lucky to have two or three that would run, uh, to start the event. So the, the public will feel this. They will know that we are out doing this work. And I, I guarantee you that Kirk really appreciates this, especially with the warranty that's gonna be covered for the next seven years. So this, this is not overlooked and we, we had lots of meetings and these, my management team was there all the way, understanding how important this is. So thank you for what you did today. That's all I've got.
Janet?
Nothing.
Commissioners? Nothing? Anything, Don? Nothing.
I went to the Conservation District annual meeting yesterday with, and I saw Don and Ian there, but it was good to see people in my neighborhood, um, receiving an award for their conservation efforts on their farm. So it was nice to see.
Just one more comment about the dinner last night. What is going on in Washington is affecting the Conservation District. About twenty-five percent of the staff across the state has been, um, laid off. And, and the farm bill has not been passed yet. So, uh, there are so many questions still in the air, uh, until things get settled down. So hopefully, and they've been without a farm bill for a while, so that needs to happen. Also, I don't know if you remember last year, um, there was a bill at, in Topeka that would raise the matching fund from the state to fifty thousand, uh, which they were expecting to pass last year. And then it got bundled with legalizing medical marijuana and the whole thing got, um, voted down. So it is back in the works. So if you are, can contact your senator and, um, tell them that hopefully it's a standalone bill this year. They do have support, they think it will pass, so, um, hoping that will happen, that will help them out a whole lot. And that's all I have.
I'll make a comment now, because I feel like it'll come up when we get to budget, uh, season in the middle of the year and probably next year. When a decision is made on the federal side or even state to cut funding, that decision is made by them. So when it comes to us and we're asked to fill that gap, we do not have the resources locally that a federal or state government does. And when we likely can't or choose not to fill that gap, that decision was made at the federal or state to cut the program. It's not us making the decision to not fill the gap and undo their decision. So I feel like that'll likely be a theme when dollars are cut on the federal side, to come to your local government and ask for, you know, uh, to fill that gap in. And if we just don't have the resources to, to fill in the gap, the, the federal government would potentially leave behind. We're not the ones who made that painful decision, so. I see that becoming a theme in the next year.
Thanks, Scott. I don't have anything, uh, on your motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, you got it?
All right.
Thank you.